All right, we want to thank everybody for coming out tonight to this second in the few town halls that we've had. We appreciate all of you making the time. We appreciate anybody that might be online. We have city staff here to help us if we get out on a limb and we don't know the answer, hopefully they can help us fill in. We appreciate the fact that you you will all have questions. And if you want to make statements also that, you know, this is for you. So there's not going to be any any screen up there of like items that we want to talk about. It's just what you want to talk about. So if there's any issues that you've wanted to bring, and it's always been a time limit, or you you didn't get it out, or or there just, you know, wasn't enough time, this is the time to do it. And we hope we can answer your question. And like I said, if we can't, hopefully staff can back us up there. Two of the councillors won't be here tonight. They had other engagements, but we hope we can get enough of this out there with just the five of us. So thank you again for that. And we'll start with if there's any questions. And she's got a microphone and she'll come to you.
Okay, I just wanted to make a quick comment about the SDC charges for the new developments in the city of Estacada. It is important that the council looks into increasing these SDCs so that we can ensure that we have enough money to properly invest in the infrastructure of our city. These SDCs are crucial for building roads, sewers, and the utilities that make these developments possible. As Mayor Drinkwine has said in the past, you know, we're we have the lowest SDC charges or some of the lowest in the county. If we do not collect enough SDCs for the new developments and the burden of paying for the necessary infrastructure will fall on the taxpayers who already live here. And in a way, we would be subsidizing the development, the developers' construction cost. We need to look into this now as we are experiencing the increase in growth in the city, because we don't. If we don't do it now, we'll never be able to go back and collect the money. Keeping SDCs low will only result in will not result in lower home prices for the average home buyers. All it accomplishes is padding the developers' profit margins. And I just wanted to bring up one thing I found concerning about one of the developers, namely the current estates developer. When when the city and the when the, oh, sorry. When the planning committee and the city council brought up safety concerns about the potential flag lot or driveways on one of their plots designs. They brought the plan to city council, the safety concerns were brought up. But instead of acting in good faith and negotiating the potential of altering the plans, they essentially said, our designs meet the minimum standard. So we don't see a reason to have to change it. This is not to say all developers are bad or evil, but we should be working with developers who care about the opinions of this people who already live here and who want to leave a legacy of safe and quality homes in Estacada.
That was very good. You pretty much said it all in a mouthful. You know, we did look at SDCs. And that is coming in the near future. I've talked to the city manager. We'll bring that up here real soon. But at the same time, we don't want to get carried away with them, obviously. We don't want to attack the builders necessarily to make up the difference. Let's just put it that way. We are looking to get there where we should be as a small city. This is very important that we use these SDCs now before our city grows any larger and we start doing, you know, things that we've talked about, like the bigger parks and bigger spaces and stuff like that. But council, do you have anything to say to that?
Yeah, so to the point of the driveways going on to Lawrence Road. We did just get an application for another section of that at our last meeting. And even though our voices weren't necessarily heard about the the original one, that the middle project, which I don't know why they started in the middle, but this this latest one, they actually did listen. And there are no there are no driveways going out onto Lawrence Road on this one. So I appreciate that they that they took that to heart because that was a huge concern of mine. Because, you know, especially being that that's a county road, fifty five miles per hour. Regardless of the them building a neighborhood and it will them saying that it will slow down. It's still a county road with no posted speed limit, so.
Yeah, and my main issue with the whole like that essentially strong arm of the city and say like, we don't need, or sorry. Saying like essentially, we don't need to negotiate because we can defend the minimum and call it a day, you know, it's, you know. As long as they're willing to work with the city and actually build things for make sure they work with everybody, then I'm cool with it. Like, I'm not going to say we shouldn't be developing or anything like that, but as long as they're just building responsibly is the only thing.
And I think we're all in agreement with that, yeah, definitely.
Just one quick clarifying question. What what is it that you want to collect more money from them for for later? When it comes to the wastewater tree storm, sanitary sewer water?
Well, you know.
What was the later thing that you're wanting them to pay for so that the rest of the city doesn't pay for it?
Would be because the SDCs are collected to build the roads and the sewers and everything that go into that development, right?
No. The developer puts all that in out of their own pocket. They install the water lines, the storm lines, the sewer lines, the laterals to the lots.
Okay, I may have been mistaken on that point, but needless to say, with having the lowest SDCs in the county, you know, it it's all it's doing is increasing the profit margins for those developers when we could be using that money to better invest in the infrastructure. Because the more people who are in the city, the more we use roads, the more we're going to need to improve them, the more we're going to need to maintain, or you know, you don't necessarily use SDCs for maintenance. But, you know, with the increased population, we're going to need increased infrastructure, whether that is roads or sewers or whatever it is. And we want to make sure that the infrastructure we have, because what we have now, like the like the wastewater, it cannot support the increase in growth, right? I'm sure our roads and our other sewers and our parks are also the same way, you know. They what we have right now isn't sufficient for the growth we are going to see. So if we're not collecting enough SDCs, then that the the costs of increasing the infrastructure for to accommodate both the old people and the new people would fall on the burden of the people who just already live here. And then on the as a tax burden, you know, if so, if we don't collect enough SDCs, we we're going to like I said, we're going to lose money or lose out on properly investing in the city, in the city's infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Just one more for the clarifying on the Lawrence thing for you. I specifically asked the a member of the planning commission, like, this meets all the requirements for approval on the driveway thing. Like, why did it get brought to us? Because we had the Lakeshore thing brought to us. And they essentially asked us, why did you defer it to us when it meets this? Like, what's the real issue? And when that when it came to that, the issue ended up being that, and even from the members of the community, it wasn't so much that they didn't like the development or the houses or the driveways, it was the road in the visual on the road. And that's what it came down to is we don't own the road. Now, what we've talked about doing is looking into the county to see, can we acquire the road or can we do this? What the developer brought up was that they what they have to do address will help the citizens in the community on that street anyway, because they have to clear the brush for the development, which is the visual is the problem that the people that live up there had with the Lawrence Road thing. And then on the counterpoint to that also is they didn't necessarily tell us, no, we're not willing to entertain switching the thing. But they did tell us that would come at us, having to decrease lot or make smaller lots and increase houses and and things like that. So it was it got down to, do we want a higher density? Or can does this meet code? And it met code. So we get into the the rules of that too. So it's kind of like, what do you want? Do you want us to build this? Build it out, tell them to make smaller lots and more houses, or do you want us to let them roll with the plan? Because that's kind of what we did is we let them roll with the plan with going forward that they're addressing a lot of the issues and us stepping up to the plate to say, hey, county, what can we do to acquire this road? What can we do to slow this road down, right? Because I mean, that's the real issue is the speed on that road and being able to see down it. And and to that point, none of us, I don't think on this council, were super thrilled about the idea of cars backing up. We care, we have kids, things like that, but it was one of those things that unfortunately, we can't tell the developer how to. But like Jerry said, they they did address it going forward, which we appreciated. And they were very timely in adding the stop sign that they brought to our attention was missing, right? They they went ahead and did that as well out there.
Yeah, you know, the way I see the codes and like them saying like, we meet the minimum code is essentially that is it. The code is the floor. They just strictly meet the bare minimums required by the county. They're not required to go above the codes or anything beyond that. But, you know, we should, you know, it's it's the it's the floor. It's not the ceiling, right? You know, they could go above and beyond, and they could have done flag lots, they could have done other options instead of dumping driveways onto a road that has a forty five. And essentially what, you know, I was sitting in the in the thing, you know, one of the guys on the developers like, oh, just sit a cop out there and enforce the speed limit. But we all know that's not going to happen. It, you know, whether, you know, it's a county road, they're they're not going to set aside a sheriff to sit there and monitor a speed limit, you know, it's a better idea to hopefully maybe potentially change the design a little bit, make it slightly safer for the people for the cars backing in there. We know that it's going to be families and stuff buying those houses, you know, and it's dumping straight onto that road, which also is a safety concern because of the speed limit, right? You know, so there could have, I'm just saying, there could have been other ways to potentially deal with that safety that instead of them saying, hey, you know, potentially, we could come back with different plans, see how you like it. Maybe the people who already live there like it better, maybe the planning committee likes it better. But instead of saying that, all they said was, we meet the minimum, so why should we negotiate? And that's my real issue with it.
I don't remember him ever saying, we meet the minimum. I think that's you saying that, but it they said they meet the code.
Yeah, they meet.
Because there's not a minimum or a maximum for the number of driveways going out onto a road.
Well, the code, I mean, the code technically is a minimum, right? Because.
No, the code is just the code. It's the directions for how they're supposed to design their their subdivision.
Yeah.
It's the instructions.
Yeah, they have to meet that code.
It's not a, yeah, but it's not. It's not that they're meeting the bare minimum. It would be that they're just doing what the cities ask them to design it as. So I understand your point. All I'm saying is that we should look at the code. Sure. If we need to make changes to a code, I I'm all for making changes to code. If we don't want driveways going out to Lawrence, but all I'm saying is that if we put the rules in place for them to design it and they go to an engineer and the engineer looks at the code and says, this is all the requirements from the city, not minimum or maximum, just the requirements to get it approved. And then they design it that way. They're not going to know what somebody's opinion of it's going to be. They have to look at the code. I just know because we're we've worked on a couple subdivisions and we and we look through checking the boxes to make sure we meet every criteria. And it's you never know what curveballs are going to be sent at you. So if there's something that's important for the city council to change, I would say we should look at the code and change that. If we don't want driveways going to Lawrence, we should specifically note that in the code section for that zoning. And I think that would deal with the issue a lot better than it's not that they and I don't know what they were thinking in line, but I know the way I think about it when we're going through that. It's not like the bare minimum, you just have to meet the criteria for all those different things. And that's probably the way that they're thinking about it, not so much that they're just trying to get over on people and and do the minimum. I didn't hear them say the minimum once in that meeting.
Well, they said they could defend it at the board. And so then, so why should they change it? But instead of being willing to actually work with the city, that's my main point, is they they were literally unwilling to work with the city because they can go to the board and defend it and then call it a day, right? That's the part I have an issue with.
Yeah, and I think discussion could have been handled a little bit different in the earlier stages. You're absolutely right. There could have been more discussion to work with both sides.
Yeah.
When they were planning this earlier in the plan. But when they got to us by that time, it had already been decided. And you're absolutely right. There could be more discussion and it goes both ways. They followed code. They did. You know, and and they made that very apparent.
Yeah.
You're right. But yes, that's something we got to look at going forward with developers. That's a fine line. I think sitting down at the table and and having more discussion, I think with the planning department, having more discussion early on. So we can iron these out before they come to us and maybe get a different result, you know, that's possible. Yes.
Right, right. And it's like, it's all a compromise. We don't want to increase SDCs to the point where nobody can build. We don't want barely any, so we can't literally pave to build anything, you know. There's a probably there's a middle ground in all of it. It's just as long as everyone's willing to have a negotiation and have a good faith discussion about it, then I'm fine with it. But, you know, if if people are unwilling to participate, then it makes negotiate, they go nowhere. And they just say, we meet the code, call it a day.
Yeah, I I would definitely like to revisit that code before, you know, developers start trying to put driveways out on the Deuce. You know, because that would be that would be terrifying, you know. So I would definitely like to revisit that code before, you know, we before more applications come in in the Deuce Road area. So, you know, driveways don't go out on the Deuce or
It's a great idea.
Or River Mill Road when when that gets, you know, the the lower part of River Mill Road, I guess. It's the upper part is already being developed.
Especially with as much traffic as we're seeing. It's just getting worse.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that.
One quick note, that city engineer will be coming to the council meeting June tenth and discussing SDCs. So timely conversation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank the council, Mayor Sean. Appreciate you giving us the format that we have tonight. I'm a little disappointed with our attendance. We have a lot of keyboard warriors, as I'm sure you're all aware of. This is an opportunity for those that do have either a comment or a question or something to say. There again, you're giving us this opportunity and I thank you for it, everybody on the council and our mayor. As you're probably expecting, I do have several questions. I have several concerns. I'll bring them up so I can give throughout the meeting tonight so that I give the other people that are in attendance the opportunity to ask their questions or comments that they might have. I'd like to start off with, I agree with this gentleman up here with the SDC money. I have my question on that is I'm very much for increasing the SDCs for our community. It is a way of paying for some of the infrastructure and some of the needs that we have for our community. I don't know all the legalities of it, where this money goes, but who determines? The question is, is who determines how this SDC money is being spent? That's my first question. The other question I have is, is there any attempt? Or what is being done to try to slow down the growth of our community? That's what I have for now.
Well, SDCs in the budget, the that that's part of the budget itself. And just last week, the budget committee met and they so the city puts together the budget. And then the budget committee, which is made up of city council and members of the community as well oversee that budget, look through it and make sure that that the money is going where it should be going. So it's a community, it's council, city, community partnership, looking over the budget. And SDCs are part of the city's budget. And then in terms of growth? We are, I mean, it's what do we what do we know? The the biggest concern that we have in terms of growth is our concern with the wastewater treatment plant. Would 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 you all agree there? That's the biggest concern, water rights as well too.
And the and the school and the schools.
And the schools. And safety, right. And then in terms of of growth, it's this is this is it's it's all driven by land use rights. So if if somebody wants to sell their property to somebody else and that somebody else is a developer and that developer meets the codes as we were talking. As long as the the engineers and the DEQ tell us that we've got capacity here in town to handle the water rights, to handle the sewer. We just try to allow growth to happen and guide it to the best that we can.
Sure. So what is the status on our waste treatment plant, our new waste treatment plant? How many years down the road are we looking at it even being started? But yet the growth still continues to go at a faster pace than we're able to keep up with. There is more important issues, I won't say more important issues, but I'm going to say there's several other issues that tie in with our number one sewage treatment plant. Jim mentioned the safety, our roads, the crime situation in this area. It is just seems like we have so many things that are at the top of our list. And it it seems like we're so far, we we're in this cart in front of the horse mentality.
Yeah. And Wally, I think everyone up here would agree with you from that standpoint. If if there was something that we could do to slow that growth, we would be happy to do that. The best that we can do is crime, continue to work with our public traffic and public safety committee, identifying the issues that are out there, having a fantastic relationship with Clackamas County in terms of at least communication, getting them out here. They they come to the traffic and public safety committee meetings each month. They meet with the mayor on a regular basis as well too. And then working with the contract to make sure that we've got the right staffing out here. So so the best that we can do is manage that growth as opposed to as opposed to stop the growth. If if I think if it were up to any of us, we'd put that pause button on it right now and make sure that it doesn't happen. But as long as the our governor says we're in a housing crisis and the rules are set up that if if somebody wants to come in and build and they meet the the rules and the qualifications, we can't do anything to stop it. It comes to land rights at that point.
So so everything, every every subdivision that we've approved, all of those, all of those houses have already been accounted for in our capacity at our wastewater treatment plant, at our water, our water plant. All of those houses have already been, they've already been counted towards that capacity. So we're not adding to the, we're not adding to the, you know, to, we're not adding to the count because those those houses have already been accounted for. So right now, we're not actually up against issues. It's every if everything that was accounted for, everything that's been annexed into the city were to be built up tomorrow, yes, we would be up against capacity. But it's not, that's not likely to happen. Our wastewater treatment plant is scheduled to be finished in 2026. And by that time, you know, we with all of these houses that are being approved now are probably still not going to be completely built out. We're we're not going to be up again, or we're not going to be up against capacity for our current plant until after our new plant is already in place.
And I think we've got a natural fixer here, such as the economy and houses have slowed down in sales. So that's a good plus as far as slowing down the growth just slightly so we can catch up. That's probably our winning ticket right there, right now. As far as slowing it down in the future, as they said, you can't say no. You know, I've learned that time and time again. I wish I could stop it sometimes and, you know, reset, get us up to speed so we're ready for what's coming. But at the same time, I think we are probably more on top of the more on top of it than we've ever been in a city. We're watching. We're we're trying to find ways to bring everything together so that this is smooth transition with the new water plant, you know, the new sewer plant coming on board, stuff like that. I think we're looking at it more than we ever have. So I have to say, we're doing a lot right now. And like I said, the natural things that are happening with the the housing market and food prices and just inflation in general has kind of slowed things down just a bit. So that might be our our in win.
So, so, yeah, I totally understand that, what's what's going on. But thinking back, and of course, we can't do anything about what changes were made, let's say, ten years ago. And is the reason why we are at why, you know, where we're at today. Same thing like with the decisions that are being made today, might not be affecting us now, but are definitely going to be affecting us soon down the road. One other question I have is, what's the status of the Lakeshore apartment complex?
You know, that's a good question. I think we're all a blank on that one. I know they had nine months to come up with an in plan, but other than that, I haven't heard anything. Go ahead.
That's about, that's about all I know. I know they did have nine months to get their building permit submitted. I they every once in a while, I'll get an email that where they're working on it, working towards it. And I think they do still have plans to build, but I haven't seen anything concrete yet, so I don't have any really more information to share. If that development does happen, whether it happens or not, the actually the Lakeshore water access is that'll kind of make some development down in that area. When we get to that, that's probably a few years out still. But other than that, I I don't have anything concrete to say about that development.
Thank you. Does that kind of answer the question for you, Will? Okay, great, thank you. Surely. Yeah, Jonathan, you want to?
I'm going back on what Vincent said about maintaining the properties that people already own in this city. On Casador Court, we've had four water leaks that they've had to come in and dig up and fix. We have our pipes that our runoff pipes are not going anyplace. They're full of rocks, thanks to Comcast. The water cover meter covers on my property and on Lydia's property is broken. Those meters are sitting in water. And we had to, we went up today and put a water hose in the downflow pipes that the water should be coming out on the streets. There was no water whatsoever. So where's that water going? Under our foundations? So that needs to be addressed. I mean, we've been here, well, this time around thirty years. And the property on Casador Court, the court itself looks like a patchwork quilt. That's how many times it's been ripped up and repaired. And Don said last time that if one more pipe, they would have had to tear it up and put it all new piping in because it's it's old pipe. It's been there since ninety seven. It needs to be fixed. We pay good taxes to have that done.
Well, every year, we have a, we have I and I in our budget.
I and I.
I and I.
I mean, define it.
Infiltration and
Inflow.
Inflow. Yeah, so.
Drainage.
Yeah, drainage. So every year, we have that in our budget. It's an ongoing project that we're that we're going to be up against. I mean, that every city is up against every year as long as they exist. So it's definitely in, you know, every year it's in our budget. That's, I believe that's part of part of the SDC money goes into that. Am I, am I correct there?
No, no.
Okay, I thought I thought maybe it did, but.
Right, it's just it's that's a maintenance.
Yeah, from our general fund. So every year, it's a constant thing for every city. So it's something that we'll be up against forever.
So what happens? I mean, I get all these notices from this company, want me to do the, you know, the piping and stuff. Well, luckily, every contract that comes in works on our house says we have great underground foundation under the house. But if those pipes bust because they have no place to go, who's paying for it, the city or me?
Well, it depends on where it's coming from. I mean, if it's coming from your house to that line.
But what if it's backing up into it?
Well, the pipe shouldn't, if it's coming to the city.
Talking about the water, that the overflow pipes are where they come out to the street. They're not coming anyplace, so they have to, it has to be draining someplace into the ground, which will go into our foundation.
Is it the, are you talking about your rain drains coming off your gutter downspouts that are going to the street?
No, they got, we have, in fact, our house has all the drains. We have pipes on underground by our mailboxes that get all the overflow water and put it out into the street, which goes into the city drain there. I mean, usually when it rains like it did the other night, I have puddles of water I have to walk out into. There was no water in there. There was water in the meter boxes. I mean, I put a hose in one of the things today to see if it was coming out. It went into the meter box and out, out the crap, the meter box's lids are cracked. They've got big old chunks of concrete out of them. We need to be fixed.
Typically, like Mayor Sean was saying, if it's after the meter on your side of it, that's private development. But if it's on the other side, then it's the city's responsibility. Yeah.
Those are, these are great questions, but I feel like the council works more on policy level. And I don't know that we have public works, you might have more answers you want to share. But these are great things to talk to our public work staff about. So, yeah, we'll follow up with you and then we can report back to the council what we find. If that would be. Okay, well, that's that's a pretty quick turnaround time for today, but we'll get we'll get and check, get that with you and check it out. Okay.
Can you go over a quick review of what the SD, what SDCs are used for when they're collected?
They are used for expansion of the current system. So there are system development charges. And like councillor McElroy said, when a developer develops, that they're paying for all the streets, all the water and sewer infrastructure, curbs and sidewalks to build. all the water and sewer infrastructure, curbs and sidewalks to build out the the basic, the foundation of the community that we, you can either build businesses or houses in on the lots. So they they take care of all that. This, then there's system development charges paid to hook onto the water system when the, when a house or business is built. And those are spent for water. There's the same thing with sewer, streets, parks and stormwater. And there's, we have capital improvement project list, CIP list. That's the engineer puts together based on project needs. And that is what, that would expand the system out. Like if there's a road that needs to get expanded outside of the actual development, or say there's a roundabout that needs to be put in at River Mill Road that might be impacted by multiple developments, system development charges or can the funds that come in through those can be used for constructing those street projects or doing upgrades to the water plant or based on what the, you know, what fund they came in for. And it's tracked. Sadie is our finance director and she reports on what they were spent on. Every January, it goes in the council packet. And so you can see, you know, what those funds are being spent on each year. And that's a, so that, but it's outside.
So they understand we can't swap funds.
Right, can't swap funds.
Funds from any other fund for another.
Right, and we can't use them for maintenance of, say, parks. We can't use them for maintenance of parks. It has to be for putting a new element in a park or developing a new park or purchasing property. But it has, so it's like an expansion of the system. And they have to be in the appropriate fund that they were collected for. But the developer does do all the basic work inside their own development. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I just, the the perspective I was just trying to get to is when we have the conversation about SDCs, I'm all for looking at like increasing SDCs from the lens of what is the need? What capital improvement projects do we have on the books that we'd like to get done? What are those going to cost? What is the shortfall? And what's the adjustment that needs to be made? Not comparing us to Lake Oswego's SDCs and saying that we're cheaper than another county in Clackamas County because they have a whole different budget and a whole different set of needs. So if there's a shortfall, if we need $12 million in parks and we're only projected to have 10 million and we need to make up the $2 million difference, I think that's a good way to look at the needs of the city and what we need to do on the SDCs for increasing them if if it's needed. And then rather than comparing it to other cities within Clackamas County that don't have the same population, the same budget, the same infrastructure needs as Estacada, I would like to look at our needs specifically and what, where our shortfalls are and then adjust the SDCs accordingly where it's where it's needed. I think that's a lot better way than comparing it to other cities that may have different expenses than us.
Also, I I know you're on the committee, but I think this is just important on the Traffic and Public Safety Committee. But I think this is just important for everybody to know that Don only has so many eyes and so many guys walking around town. So if you guys are finding stop signs or street signs that are no longer legible or that are missing or your water meter lids and things like that, your caps, if those things are cracked, please write into him, send him an email, call him. I mean, he sat up here and we, the the committee directly asked him, what do we need to do to be actionable on certain things in a lot more timely manner? And some of those things like stop signs, signage, little things like that, painting the fire lane that's no longer legible, things along those lines, like he's ready to do that now. He just needs to know about it. And Melanie will direct that to happen if it's something bigger that we need to. But a lot of it is just on those smaller items. It's just Don being notified. And so if that doesn't happen, if you get to Don, you can't get a hold of him, then I encourage you, come to the Traffic and Public Safety meeting, especially like in the case of your water thing. And we can directly ask then, you know, I'm the liaison for that and I will happily ask the question. So I just encourage you, please help us be the eyes and the ears for this community so that we can address these needs timely for you guys.
Before we go, Andrew, you've had your hand up for a while. Let me get to you before and I'll come back.
So my questions are mostly just piggybacking on some of the ideas that have been tossed around. And thanks for your time tonight, you guys. Hypothetically, sort of in a way of tweaking the system, if we increase the SDCs, would that be a way of essentially decentivizing rapid growth? And would that serve? I mean, my my question also is kind of a capitalist question as representatives of the city. Can we give you the responsibility of trying to extract as much money as possible for the community from these new developers? I think that those are just things that I'm wondering rather than, you know, giving them kind of a, like if we really have the lowest rates in the county, you know, any other business would say, oh, we need to raise our prices. And that maybe would help slow things hypothetically. And then also, Sean, the last time we talked out at the church, we were sort of throwing ideas around about the the growth really will stop when we hit the urban growth boundary and it's full. Now that might be at a population of 10,000 people. But is that also sort of hypothetically correct to assume?
I I think that would be correct to assume if we hit the urban growth boundary and we've come to that, that extent, then we have filled all the buildable areas within that urban growth boundary. So yes, that would slow down growth. But as I'm understanding with the new policies that are going through, they're bumping urban growth boundaries, 10,000 and above in cities if needed for more building. So I don't know if that would hold the line per se.
The the first question, you know, the bumping up the, you're trying to slow growth by bumping up the SDCs. My fear is that the the bumped up SDCs are just going to get, that money is just going to end up being paid by the end user, the purchaser of the home. So if we bump up the SDCs to try to slow growth, I just, like I said, I just have a feeling that the the people that are going to be hit the hardest by that are going to be the end users, the first purchases of that home. Yeah. Not going to get, people aren't going to stop coming out here to build. You're just not going to get any poor people out here. It's going to be a lot like San Francisco when it's one of the most expensive places in the country to build and no poor people can afford to live there anymore. So I I don't like the idea of making it cost prohibitive to to build out here for getting the evil capitalists to pay their fair share or whatever. But I I don't think it's going to have the desired effect of of, people are still going to build. There's nowhere else to build. They're going to come out here and build. It's going to be more expensive, so you're not going to have any first time home buyers that come out because the homes are going to be $800,000. And you're going to get a bunch of people that may not think like a lot of people around here that move in and and take over. And then it just changes, completely changes the city. And it'll be an upper in similar to like parts of Happy Valley and stuff like that where it's very, very high end, great schools and everything, but not very good for the people that grew up there that can't afford to live there anymore. Yeah.
I was just gonna, I think you you hit on it well there. The incentive is not for builders out here is not low SDCs, it's buildable space. It sounds like a lot of other cities are bumping against the urban growth boundaries already. Estacada is not. And that's the incentive for coming out. And then my understanding too for SDCs, and Melanie, you can help me out on this, but it's a process to get those raised, right? Do we, are we able to say, let's raise our SDCs to, you know, 600%? Or is there, do we, do we need, do we need to have them reviewed by outside parties?
They, we do need to have justification for raising them. And as I've been talking with the city engineer, he does feel that there is justification. Things are more expensive to build now than they were. So he'll be coming on June 10th and bringing that proposal for what, you know, what he feels is justifiable for the projects needed and what kind of an increase, you know, we could, because you do have to justify it. It has to be not just a random number. But he'll bring that perspective on the costs of constructing these projects, any new projects that have been added. And so he'll be able to answer some questions about that and, yeah.
And and I too, I want to make some clarity here. My cohorts here are almost right. But when you, when you say that the developer will raise the price of a home because of the SDCs, we're not talking raising the SDCs through the roof here. We're talking to getting to a point where we should be for a city our size going forward and looking at things we are going to need in our infrastructure as we do this. But developers are going to raise the cost of your home no matter what you do. The idea that you think that SDCs are the only way they're going to raise your thing. So if we do that to them, then they're going to raise. We're already, if you look around, I mean, I'm seeing houses being built at 600,000 on the average. So to to think that that's the only reason they're raising the prices, it's not. Profit is there and they know it and they're making it. When developers used to come in here years ago, when I first got on here, they'd come, a single developer by himself would come in here and pose his, his plan to build. And everything was copacetic and we'd go through the motions and we'd grant him his build and everything would be fine. Now you've got developers coming in here with boards, okay, of of six and seven that are planning this whole development. Do you think that's cheap? Do you think those people don't cost money? They do. So there's a lot more money on the table these days than there was back in the day. So I'm not so much in agreement as far as raising the prices of homes. They're going to do that no matter what. So just getting our SDCs in line is the key here. I'm not looking to make a mint on SDCs, but I am looking to put us in a situation where we're looking out for the future of Estacada in a reasonable and fair way with developers.
On the note of like the cost of the house coming up hypothetically speaking, right? Whether by SDCs or whatever it raises. The other thing we have with concerns, and and this is me asking also the community what you want, is you got to, what kind of housing do you want to attract here? Because you could get, start to get, say, these houses stop selling because the price is too much. Well, the developers, they got nowhere else to build and they're acquiring land here because like we said, the other, the west side, they're at their urban growth boundaries until the governor goes and waves her wand and moves it, which she's working on, right? They're coming here anyway. So you have to ask yourself, do you want single family homes? Or do you want to start to see multiplexes and more apartments and stuff like that? Because what they do with their land, as long as it's within zoning requirements, is up to them. So in some instances, when we're talking about things like this, we need to really be cautious because if you want to keep your rural, right, community feeling and stuff like that and avoid some of these bigger things like more apartment complexes and not say, we can't have any or we're going to keep them all out. That's not what I'm saying here. But you have to really think about what you're trying to attract. And for me personally, I'd love to see more families here. If we're going to build and we're going to have them, welcome the families, the single family. I don't, I don't want a bunch of apartment space here taking up our beautiful scenery. I just don't.
Garcia had a question.
Not to beat the SDC thing to death, but am I incorrect in assuming that as all of these developments come in, that there will be more load on our roads, more load on our sewer system, more load on city staff, more load on the need for policing? That cost should be borne by the developer, in my opinion. Because they're contributing towards, you know, and now we're saying, you know, our, our water bills are going up, our sewer bill is going up, you know, the, the school is going to get approved. And so, you know, that's all being borne by all of us. So anyway, that's just my, my two cents on that. Specifically, I came here to address the issue of speeding in our town. What is being done, what can be done to address the issue of speeding in our town? And most specifically, what is going to be done on Cascadia Ridge Drive? We need speed bumps. I don't want them, but I'm all for them. I was told by Dawn that it's in the hands of the city council now to address the parameters for that. I'm very hopeful that that's going to happen. Saturday at about 11:15, I was coming down Cascadia Ridge Drive. I don't drive 25 through there. I'm sorry, but there are cars on both sides. There are children, there are pets there. My cat was killed in December by somebody speeding past my house. I was coming down Cascadia Ridge Drive. I was probably about one and a half streets away from cemetery. A man in a shiny black car raced past me. He passed me on Cascadia Ridge Drive. That's too much. I live on, when you get up to the top of Cascadia Ridge Drive and it stops on, I believe that's Gardner, and then it comes down the hill. It comes down the hill, people, speed, 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 speed. They hit the flat and you can hear it. Wham. They hit the gas and they race up to their houses. So what is, and and in town, I try to obey the speed limit. I try to obey the speed limit in front of the schools because I'm sorry, but I don't want to kill anyone. I don't want to kill somebody's child. I don't want to maim anyone for life. I'm tired of people tailgating me. I'm tired of people honking at me and I'm tired of people flipping me off. So what is being done with all this growth in our town? What is being done to address the issue of speeding and safety in our community? And specifically, what is going to happen on Cascadia Ridge Drive? Because that neighborhood is out of control.
So you'll be happy to hear that on the last council meeting last, last Monday, I literally just brought this very thing up. And I was going to take it to a motion and the city lawyer said, you don't need to go there yet because it has to come back to you. The city staff has it on the top of their priority list. What they're doing is going to create a code looking at other cities that have speed bump. We can't just stick speed bumps down. They got to do some figuring out like how other cities lay it out. There has to be guidelines so that Dawn can do a uniform thing. You can't just stick them in certain streets and not in others. And then there's considerations for like the fire trucks and their equipment on spacing in between and the type. But I just brought it literally, this thing, this very, very topic to the council. And we're all in agreement that it needs, something needs to be done. And so they're going to come back to us, the planners are with code, and then we're going to adopt it and vote on it. And hopefully your issue will be resolved. I actually think of you often when I'm going to fight for this. So this is something that's personal to me. I'm fighting for as well. If we can do more, I don't think it should get to somebody's kid being ran over. We're in agreement. I don't, I don't think it should get there. But these are the things that are on the table currently to be done. Dawn said, just so that you're aware, he said, even if he had them right now without a code, without any kind of a charter to how it can be done, he couldn't just stick them up. So we're doing it the right way. We're going to look at where we're, our shortcomings are. It was just missed. You can blame us for that and, but we're addressing it like now.
And we haven't forgot about your cat because I still remember that conversation. So we're working hard on this. And we have a great team on traffic safety that's been diligent on finding ways to make the city safer. So we're working hard.
Commerce and there's money and all of these things. But I don't want to be negative, but some of the people coming to this community don't share the same values that we have. They don't care. You know, I posted on the Nextdoor app the night that they killed my cat and I said, you know, you don't care. You speed past this house every night and every morning. Dawn put the thing out there with the, with the, you know, the little sign that tells you what speed you're doing. It went out after everybody had our, people start leaving for work at 4:30 in the morning. People are coming home. It was already picked up by then. So the thing came out past, you know, commute time and it was picked up before evening commute time. So whether there was documentation or not about the actual speeding in that area, I don't know. But what I told people in the Nextdoor app was, you know, we as a neighborhood implore you to slow down because you're going to kill someone. It was bad enough that it was a cat. Next thing you know, it's going to be one of our older people who drive through there and walk through there. Next thing you know, it's going to be somebody's child, you know? And when that guy passed me, he was racing past two houses where there are young children. Those young children are out in the front of their houses. I see them often. You know, they're like seven and eight years old. You know, somebody's going to, a little ball's going to go out into the street and some child is going to follow it and boom. You know?
I really don't want that to happen.
I don't want that to happen, you know? I mean, I just, I I I sit there in the evening when I hear them speeding by and I. I don't want that to happen, you know? I mean, I just, I, I, I sit there in the evening when I hear them speeding by and I think of all kinds of things that I could possibly do. But I don't do it.
Yeah. No, you said you're, you're tired of being honked at and tailgated. That's, that's one thing I will never get tired of. I wa, I want the same thing everybody else does here. And my way of doing it is I drive under the speed limit. I've said it multiple times. Honk at me, tailgate me, flip me off, yell at me. As long as you're, as long as you're behind me and driving, driving slow, I'm doing what I, I'm doing, you know, what I can for the community. So all I can ask is for the rest of the community, you know, for anybody listening. You know, you wanna curtail speeding, just try to, you know, drive, drive slower, drive under the speed limit. You know, um, you know, eventually, you know, maybe not everybody will get the message, but enough people might get the message that, um, you know, just our driving habits might make a change. So.
I hope so.
Yeah.
I do.
Set up a camera and make them famous.
Yeah.
Shame them into it. Get a, get a speed cam, uh, camera with a, that shows their speed and then just take some pictures of them and then put them on a Facebook page.
I've thought about that.
Do you know these people? And just keep blasting their car and their plates on, on there and hopefully their neighbors will start talking to them.
You know?
I recently saw, somebody sent me a photo. What Sandy does is they take their radar trailer, trailer, little trailer with the data. And they'll actually like do a little fact sheet of the data of that specific study, that traffic study that they did. And they'll post it on their social media for the whole community to see. Tells them car count, speeds, average speeds, times, all that. Maybe that's something we could look at doing too, is posting and publishing that. I mean, just make it known. So it's like everybody sees because I can assure you that Chief Mendoza on the traffic safety meetings is in here listening and he hears every one of your concerns about speed and things like that. And he's making adjustments to where his officers sit and when, and you'll start to notice that they're parked in different spot. It's not just to look good or to have a new spot to have coffee. I promise you. Some of these places they're specifically addressing have been brought to the chief. So I, as the liaison, I can promise you that if you keep, continue to come with those concerns, you might not directly see it and I'm sorry, but I can promise you that there's officers that are paying more attention to the areas that you're talking about right now. It's just factually, it's starting to happen more and more and more. And with the speed bump thing, my only hope is that will obviously, you know, we can't ever take away everybody's speed. That's just not gonna happen, but I hope it will at least slow people down a little bit. Give us consideration and it will get us caught up to where we should be to begin with. So.
I don't know what to do about rude people who don't give a crap about anybody but themselves. I mean, but, you know, I have thought about the, taking the pictures and doing things like that. But the problem is I have a bad, uh, I have a problem with anger and I work retail in a very small community. So I have to be very careful for the sake of my employer.
We don't want you going postal, right?
We'll just, we'll just set that up in front of Paul's house and, uh.
I want to make something clear. Jonathan, I was not knocking Dawn. Dawn does the best he can for the budget he has. But the budget, the budget needs to be changed to take care of the people that have lived here all their lives. Their properties and their roads need to be taken care of too. Not all the new roads. That's my thing. Jonathan is, I mean, Dawn's a great person and he works with me. And so I hope he's listening because I did not mean to slam him. I mean to slam the budget of Estacada for not taking care of the roads that are already here. Thank you.
I think we just approved a decent amount. They're just specific streets that are being targeted.
What's preventing or, or what has, uh, the thought of photo radar? Why don't we be able to generate some revenue? If these people were it hurts in the pocketbook, I think that that would make a lot more sense than spending money on speed bumps. Um, let's see how long it would take before some of these people be more aware of that, hey, uh, my picture's being taken, my license is being recorded. And there's gonna be a fine attached to it. I, I, I hope that maybe something like that would be considered, especially, you know, for these areas where this speeding is going on. I've mentioned it about my road, but unfortunately I'm not within the city. I don't foresee any, uh, photo radar coming out my way, but, uh, uh, it's, it's crazy. And it's crazy everywhere. And, and I'm so sorry for, for any loss, whether it be an animal. I think it's just a matter of, of time.
Yeah.
Before it's, it's gonna get very drastic.
And we've had discussions with Mendoza about traffic stops increasing, you know, taking a look at traffic and actually stopping them and citing them and, and, uh, increasing fines, things like this. So that conversation is also being had. Um, so I think that will help immensely. Um, but yeah, we're definitely looking into it. We do, to a certain percentage.
Have a question back there in the back row.
Yeah, I, I would have to say, um, every time I come down around the school, I check my speedometer on the radar sign there and uh, that's good to have. Uh, my, my name's Matt Suits. Uh, my wife and I lived in Eagle Creek about thirty-four years. Our, our four children all went to Estacada schools. Um, we, we moved up to a, a very small eastern Oregon town for about five years. Been back in the area about a year. Uh, I myself love the rain, but it's great to be back. Uh, but wh- while up there, um, I was an appointed and then elected councillor and mayor of Portham. And we had a big fifty lot subdivision come in and everybody freaked out, but, um, along the line of SDCs, we didn't have any and we instigated five thousand dollars sewer and water. Uh, and believe it or not, for a town of eleven hundred people, uh, the engineer said we could have something around twenty-one thousand dollars. It's a weird racial percentage because there were so few population there. Um, and I think I recall even the city of Portland, uh, I think they don't have any water SDCs because they have such capacity. But kind of my point was in my comment, if it comes to the point where the increases come for the sewer, for instance, um, they're, they're in Joseph, uh, Willow County. They started about three years ahead of time with a five dollar a month increase and pretty soon it got to ten. Um, uh, rates were only about forty-five, fifty dollars anyway, small town. But that really helped out the taxpayers when it came time to do that. It was a big chunk already been set aside. And, and I think by, by law also it couldn't go into any other fund. So, uh, and, and I, I had another comment about the, the possible uh, water restrictions and I can give someone else a chance to respond or, uh, or continue that comment. Okay, it's, uh, um, I, I noticed there was only three days that was listed would be a possible restriction. Um, w- we unfortunately have an HOA where we live. And they wanted us all to have our lawn sprinklers, uh, on by May third. You know, weather's always variable, but you know what it was like? May third, just a couple of weeks back, it was just pouring. And they, they also have restrictions, such things as, uh, clover is considered a weed. So they, uh, encourage spraying chemicals on stuff like that. Uh, clover is a beneficial cover crop that a lot of farmers use. Um, and, and I was just reviewing a case in Maine where there's a ruling against HOAs. People want to zero scape and save water and also promote for, uh, um, pollinators, uh, birds and so on. And, uh, the court ruled in favor of the residents. So that's something I would like to see, um, the city of Estacada take a strong stance on that and possibly allow, uh, where maybe not allow is the right word, but help the residents, I think, uh, overcome the, when I see kind of a totalitarian attitude by the HOA about whether you have, uh, a lawn. And of course, shoot the price of gas even in a lawnmower these days is sky high. That was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
What HOA are you in? Dave, if you don't mind me asking. Golden Rock. I, I recently looked at our HOA because our HOA did some stuff with, um, one of my neighbors that I didn't really, uh, uh, lifelong veteran and, uh, gentleman that's disabled and they, and they fined him and then let the fines rack up and then put a lien on his house. Um, and they transitioned HOAs in the middle of that. And so, and he didn't know how to sign up on the new HOA. So his fees started, he was doing auto pay and then it switched over. And I would just encourage you, if, if your HOA is becoming too totalitarian, look at your covenants and look at how many votes you need to have to get rid of them. And in my HOA, it's seventy-five percent. So three out of four people have to be fed up enough. And we looked at our budget for our HOA and it was like seventy grand and thirty-five of it's to the HOA for managing the HOA to go around and harass people. Very little is spent on actually taking care of anything whatsoever. And so when you get fed up enough and enough neighbors are fed up, just spend the time to get the petition going. I'm looking into doing it in my neighborhood. Would love to see them be done with. I, I don't think there's any benefit to them, but as far as the relates to the water, we are looking at an option to where if they're requiring it during a water restriction, that whatever fines that they give to people in the HOA, we then find the HOA and was speaking to the lawyer about a way to get that as a grant back to those people. So the HOA finds you, we find the HOA and then we give a grant back to the person that got fined to pay their fine. So that it becomes a big waste of time for them. Because if they don't want to help the city out, then then they should pay the price for it. And then it'll just be a lot of paperwork that they have to pay to do for nothing. Oh, yeah, thank you.
Um, the soil is so poor. When, when they did our house and the one next to it, it killed a large share of our landscaping. It just drowned. Um, yeah, so that's another reason to, but yeah, thanks and everything. I'm glad I came here.
One, one thing that was really helpful for me that I kind of learned from that too, is that like we have the automatic sprinklers that came with our system and we moved in, it was that time of year, we just plugged it in. And I don't know what's too much or too little. And I think that there's probably a lot of people that do that same thing. So aside from the HOA part and conserving, on the conserving water side, if everyone that has an automatic sprinkler could look at the recommended amount of watering they're supposed to get per week. I was doing like a half hour twice a day and didn't, I mean, that's what it was set up on. And so when I took the time to find out what my system's really supposed to have and the amount of moss that's growing in my yard, I was overwatering my lawn. If we could get people to just get ahead of it and make sure that they're giving their lawn the right amount to make it green without overwatering it, I think we'd be in a lot, lot better spot, even without having to go after the, the extreme bills that are out there too. But it'd be real helpful to the city.
So I, it's something I just learned recently, the last couple of years is that um, a lot of the HOAs in Estacada aren't even managed by people in Estacada. Uh, they're managed by, you know, they're outsourced to, you know, companies in Portland and stuff. So that's something that, that was new information to me. I didn't know that that was a thing until, um, I think it was twenty twenty-two when I, uh, when that, you know, came to, came to light to me. Um, and I mean, that might be one way, um, you know, if you want to keep the HO, keep an HOA, but not have it managed by, not outsourced to, to somebody who doesn't know anything about what we have going on in our community. Um, you know, if you want to keep the HOA, but not want to have those totalitarians that don't know what's going on, you might want to try to figure out a way to bring it in-house, make it your own.
Uh, I just had a clarifying question. I, I personally despise HOA. That's why I bought my house where I did because it was one of the, the sole communities that barely, that doesn't have one. It was built back in the seventies. Is there a reason or who decides that, because the, all, pretty much all new developments, Campanella, Cascadia Ridge, they come with HOAs pretty much from the get-go. Is it the developers themselves who are instituting it? Or is it something in the code that we could say like, we prefer not to have them?
It's usually driven by common areas of maintenance that the city doesn't take on. Like if you have an open space that's dedicated to that neighborhood, that say you have a private park in your neighborhood that's not paid for by the public, by, by the city. I believe that's probably the main drive because it's one of the biggest hiccups too. So say you go get a vote in and whatever your covenant says, seventy-five percent of the people say, we want to get rid of it. Any open spaces that are owned by, commonly by the neighborhood have to either be taken on by a, a, I believe a personal property owner has to agree and the, and the community has to agree to give that to that property owner. Or the city has to agree to take it on. And a lot of times those open areas don't meet the conditions, the, the requirements for the city to take them on. That's one of the biggest struggles is, is common open spaces or some sort of common need in the community that everyone's pooling together to pay for is usually what drives it, is my understanding. There's no, I don't know of any benefit to, to, uh, the developers necessarily that I'm aware of. I'm, I'm not one hundred percent familiar with it, but I think it's driven by the open common spaces.
Yeah. And his point to the getting in there and changing that can be done. I did it. I was one of the first ones. Um, up where I am and, uh, we had an HOA, got to be president of the HOA. Uh, had a secretary, everybody, we voted it out and, uh, it went away, but it took a lot. Yeah. Because we had to notify all the lending agencies, the state of Oregon, everything to get it out of there. And it took some time, but it did happen and we're happy it did. Um, and people are pretty responsible with their yards and the open space that's there. Plus we have a park there that is a city park. So it makes it a little easier on us when we did that. But yes, you can do this.
Was that right, Melanie? Is that your understanding of the HOA?
Yes, that there's typically a common area, um, like your, your Cascadia Ridge has that beautiful, um, kind of landscape there going up along Cemetery Road. I'm sure that's maintained by the HOA. But I, I don't know much about HOAs other than their contracts between all of the homeowners, all the property owners in there. That's what our city attorney has said. That's why we can't necessarily help out that much except for to let you know it can be done. Um, I think there is some value to it because they'll maintain those, you know, your, your common areas of it. But if you're just paying into it to do the maintenance on those things and you could get some control, um, from the board, like if it comes back from the developer once the community is built and you can have a local board who will agree to not uh, enforce and be so totalitarian about all the rules. Uh, but there probably, there's probably some benefits. It just needs to be locally managed by the people who live there.
That's my questions out. You have another one back there?
Thank you. And totalitarian was a word I thought of instead of Nazi, I guess, or like Seinfeld, uh, but, uh, a- as I understand the state, um, I, I think it was two thousand twelve even or something like that mandated these, uh, HOAs because it was supposed to help the homeowners maintain their, uh, in- investment. And, and I guess that just blossomed and blossomed. A- and there's some, uh, communities that don't have it, even right next to ours. I'm not sure of the, what determines that, but, um, a- and, and how that, I don't remember ever voting for anything like that at the elections, but that's how that came apart. Uh, maybe, I'm probably wrong on the date.
Thank you. Paulie has a question for us.
A lot of what I'm hearing, um, the result of why we can't do things that maybe we want to do as a community, uh, maybe to try to give the control back to the citizens of our committee or our community, excuse me. It all sounds like our problem is starting down in Salem. And maybe our community can rally, including the support from our counselors and our mayor to fight Salem, to try to make these changes that are gonna benefit our community. Um, I would totally encourage everyone to take a look at what is happening? Why is it happening? And these changes that we want to see made, uh, it sounds like we need to make them down in Salem. Give us the opportunity to run our community the way that the citizens of our community want it to be ran. I recall a time, I can't recall, uh, exactly when, but there was a big change that happened in Estacada. Uh, it used to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Uh, it used to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the people in the community seemed to have more control over their community. Uh, they pretty much had to give their okay on let's say expansion or growth. Something happened to where that control of their community has gone away and it's, it's just like we have to just sit around here and just, oh wow, we gotta take it. There isn't anything we can do about it. And you know, I'm, I, I kind of think that, you know, we, we need to, we need to make our point down in Salem. We want the control of our community. We don't want people in Salem determining the future of our community.
Thank you. All right.
I would encourage you to tell your state representative that very thing in the droves. I mean, I can't say it enough. Tell them to stop worrying about drugs and mental illness and Narcan for people in Washington County and start worrying about infrastructure and things that affect us here. That's the very thing I talked to one of the potential state representatives about not two weeks ago and we can shout it and we, we do. I know I do. I bring it up when I see them, but coming from you guys, that means equally as much. So.
Okay, some other questions out there? Let's see, Jim?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city counselors, Melanie and Sadie. Appreciate you guys coming out. Well, since I've been back from our extended vacations, I appreciate everyone in the community coming out here too. Uh, what I've seen in town, this is a discussion or something that we talked about last year at the city council about homelessness. It's everywhere in town since I've been back. They're all over the place. They're sleeping everywhere. They're in the past have been hiding or staying away from downtown. Now it's just all out in the open. Reason why I'm bringing it up is because, A, let's see, April nine, Clackamas County uh, doled out seven point two million and Estacada was one of the eleven recipients for homeless grants. And I just wanted to know what that was going for. Cause we've had a, we had a problem and this is something we talked about in traffic and public safety and we will with Chief Mendelso, but you know, I divided it and it's about six hundred thousand dollars for each city. So I just was curious what that was going to. Thank you.
And I, I, I think to your question, it's very important. Where does that money go? And from what I understand, the food bank was the recipient of most of that funds. Am I right?
Actually, no, the food bank was an applicant um, for those funds and it, the food bank didn't quite fit the criteria. But Ant Farm has been working in, it's a nonprofit working in Sandy and Estacada and Malala. And they have been a recipient of those funds. So it's not funds that are coming to the city um, or the food bank. But they are um, not going to be providing homeless services per se here. But um, they are a resource that we can call on if there's somebody here uh, in town who appears to need some housing or need some assistance, then they can get them to um, as much as possible, you know, work with them and get them to the services that they would need because we just really don't have services in Estacada. Um, so they'll typically need to be connected elsewhere. Um, but that's, that's where that funding went. And they did keep the food bank on the list. Um, as far as other forms of funding where maybe the food bank could get their own um, building that would have been, you know, more conducive to the work they do, have some more space, um, have an office where they could meet with people. Maybe not be right on the main street downtown uh, where it's easier. This is a easy, fairly easy access location, but also kind of congested. And so they are keeping the food bank in mind for other forms of funding.
There was a letter of support, Jim, that went out for the program that the ant farm um, was doing and it, it was my understanding, we were very specific about the people that they were, their program was going to be helping, that it was specific to people that are local to the nine seven zero two two two, nine seven zero two two and two, three area codes for Eagle Creek and Estacada. And they do services like helping with rent assistance to keep people in their homes. Uh, vouchers for getting into places and things like that, more on the side of trying to keep people from losing where they're staying. Then um, like a food kitchen or something like that for homeless services. And we were very specific with our questions when we, before we put our letter, signed on to the letter of support when we voted on that, that it was very specific to helping people from our community and not encouraging people from outside our community to come in and collect resources and, and services. And, and they gave us their word that they were going to hold to that. And they, they went over several situations where people from out of town had come into town. They found them a way back out of town to get access to services that were needed. They weren't local people. And the way that I feel about the homeless situation is I think that there's someone that's experiencing homelessness that's from our community or a family that's can't afford to stay in their home. And there's a resource like that that's available for people in our community that need our help. I think that not just public services, but the community as a whole, just neighborhoods, friends, family. People should come together and take care of people from our community. Where I have an issue with it is if we're importing Portland's problems and homeless issues where people are poorly managing the situations in their own cities and letting things get out of control. And that's, then we're left with the burden of that. I don't agree with that. But helping anyone from our community stay out of homelessness and stay in their homes. I'm, I'm all for helping those people.
Well said.
Following up on that, and, and I totally agree. Uh, you know, we need to help each other. We need to help each other in this community. Uh, but what about the migration of people, the homeless people that I've heard have been bussed in from the sandy area into the Red Fox? Is, is that a, a true issue that is happening? That is what I've heard.
My understanding was there was a period of time where there was a, during last summer where the heat was very extreme that they had a basically like made it a cooling center and they were given, some people were given vouchers and, and I haven't validated this. This is what someone else told me. So it's hearsay or whatever, but that those people came in for a period of time, however many days they were, their voucher was good for. And then after the cooling station shut down, that they were made to leave that and some of those people stayed behind in the area was my understanding of that. That situation, if that's the same thing that you were talking about.
Okay, uh, uh, I'd like to have a clarification from Jerry on the sewage treatment plant. Uh, you gave a date or a year of uh, twenty-six. Is that the start of the sewage treatment plan?
It's a, it's scheduled to be finished by twenty twenty-six.
So I can hold you to that.
That's not my schedule. That's the schedule we were given.
Because you know me, you'll hear from me, uh, if, if, if things get pushed out any further than what they're at right now.
I have zero to do with the construction of this project. So um, that's the schedule that was given to every single one of us counselors.
And we were given a start of concreting beginning this fall as well too.
Yeah.
Yeah. The contractor's been selected, sladen, and they've done a lot of these type of treatment plans in the past. They're very well qualified. And they've, they've done really well performing at keeping things within budget and our experience with all the people from their staff. It just is, I'm excited to see them get going. Um, I don't know about the timeline. Don't, don't hold me to that, but uh, it looks like everything's going well. My understanding is that we're at sixty percent of design. The contractor's been brought on for value engineering through the CMGC process. The, the next milestone, I believe, is the ninety percent mark for design. And they're going to be able to validate some, some costs at that point, better validate some costs. And the variance from the ninety percent design of that, once they give us a budget number and that, I think he said it was one percent was their variance. So when they come up with that number at ninety percent design in the last few projects that they worked at, worked on less than a one percent variance from that cost. So and they're, and they're starting to get to build a list of long lead time items that could cause delays in projects. We asked them some good questions about kind of things that they had learned and mistakes that were made on previous projects and how we're going to reap the benefits of those. And I think it's going to go really well. The, the biggest challenge that they were concerned about was the in-water permit. Um, and, and they were feeling pretty good about that as well.
So the location's still going to be, uh, it's been determined that it's going to be down here by Timber Park by our maintenance area, I believe?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So and then um, going back to the homelessness, uh, we don't have a camping ordinance in place. So as far as enforcing um, people to move along, uh, the, the sheriffs don't have anything that they can enforce. There's nothing that they can, that they can do because we don't have a camping ordinance in place.
Back to the sewer treatment plant. I was just curious. I see they've staked out um, some, it looks like by Timber Park where the fish ladders and stuff. I'm not sure if that's related to the sewer treatment plant. But I've heard that the treatment plant is going to take up some of the park. If that's true, um, are they going to make up that park area somewhere?
It'll take up, it'll take up what's the Estacada portal, not Timber Park. So it's, it's pretty much across the street. What, what is that street? The, the one that runs through there into Timber Park?
Well, the portal is where the sign is.
Yeah, yeah. So that's where the new plant.
And they'll restore the green space in front. So where your tanks are now will be returned to green space.
All right. I was just curious. I seen the stakes. I think where the fish ladder was. And I see this apartment complex that they proposed, the valve, looks like surveys have staked along that whole ridge. And I'm not sure if those stakes are the edge of the developer's property or the uh, access that we're going to get, but it looks like that goes over the edge of the hill. I sure hope you guys did have a seismic study done on that hill or require that for them because um, just the looks where they put the stakes, it, it is on the downhill side of that. That's just my thoughts though.
Yeah, well, thank you. All right. I think Jim had his hand up back there. Balamo after him.
Oh, okay. Oh, I just wanted to make a comment about like the, the homelessness and this might be a slightly unpopular opinion in this room, but you know, if we can provide more services to unhoused people and instead of like trying to criminalize it and just like, but you know, having the police take them away or something like that, you know, I would like to see more services for those people just because, you know, if we do our part to take care of the people in our community, even if we're setting the example, like, you know, within the county, like, hey, you know, we, we'll do our best to try to help people. You know, if, if every city tried to do that, the issue would be a lot less overall, right? You know, I, I understand, you know, we have budget constraints. We have all the, we have other issues that are concerning, but you know, having, having a, the food bank or a food, you know, a place for someone not to freeze to death in the winter or like die of heat stroke in the summer. Those aren't bad things for the community because at the end of the day, they're, they are also American citizens who just are in bad times, right? You know, whether it's their fault or not their fault, they could be on, because of medical debt, they could, you know, there's multitude of reasons why someone becomes homeless and you know, I think a lot more people in the city are a lot closer to becoming homeless than to ever becoming like part of the one percent or like uber rich or anything like that. So I would just like to see a balanced approach to make sure, you know, again, you know, it's not saying we're going to take care of every single person in the state of Oregon, but if we can just like do our best to provide services for everybody and again, they are American citizens, right? You know, if we can help everybody, then if, like I said, if every city did that, it would, the, the issues would be a lot less than they are right now.
Just to clarify, are you saying helping people outside that aren't from our community? Bringing people from outside our community to take care of?
No, I'm saying like if they're here and they, you know, you know, if they're, if they're homeless or unhoused, they don't have an address, you know, whether they began their journey in Estacada or whether they're just wandering around here for, on like a random Thursday, you know, it's, you know, it's not like we're just going to pick up a bunch of people from Portland and bring them here and take care of them. I'm just saying if they're here in the community and we can do things to help them or even point them in the direction of services or get them to places where they can get better help. You know, and we like help drive those services, that may be a better issue than just saying like, you know, they're homeless, you know, what, you know, they're just, you know, the dregs of society and we shouldn't pay attention to them. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I don't think anybody is really putting that uh, label on any of these. So that's kind of an extreme uh, uh, situation you're putting on us by saying this is how we look at this. I look at homelessness as what it is. It's a humanitarian thing you're talking about. Okay? We understand that these people are suffering and we will do our best to take care of these people that are here. Uh, I'm not looking to hurt anybody, dislodge anybody or make anybody's life any worse than if it's already been. I want to help them. So that is not what we're all talking about here. Um, so I, I think you, you kind of misconstrued what labeling.
I think it's more of like the rhetoric you see behind it, like not, I'm not saying from council, but like from like, you know, not members of community, like other spaces, like you see a lot of that type of rhetoric around homelessness. With, uh, and again, none of that was saying like you're saying that, you know, I'm just saying, you know, that's how they're viewed by sects of the community and that's like, that's not cool. You're like, well, you know, both extremes are not, you know, uh, are, aren't great. I think, but I'm just saying like, if we can provide better services for anybody who just happens to be here, it would, it might result in a better situ, a better outcome than, than saying like, you know, than just ignoring them or you know what I mean? Like that type of thing.
And it might become a magnet to attract people to come to Estacada. And that's why I think we should have adequate services to take care of the people from our community that are dealing with homelessness, but somebody that's random that happens to show up in Estacada, then all the people that have been in Estacada the whole time are subsidizing the homeless problem from somewhere else. And, and so Portland's not paying their fair share to use your, your idea of it is that Portland's not paying their fair share for the problem they're causing. Now the residents of Estacada are going to pay for the resources for people that don't manage the problem properly where they came from. And I would just, I, I agree with you that anyone from our, from our town that is from Estacada, from Eagle Creek and they're experiencing any issues or if they are homeless and they need help getting a place, I'm one hundred percent behind you. Where I disagree with you is just that, just because they happen to show up in Estacada and we increase services to become a magnet for that to come out here. I don't think that's a good solution either.
I, I, I don't think increasing services would make it a magnet because if that was the case, one of the main cities doing services is Portland and then Portland would be the magnet for the entire city and you don't really see that.
I would say if you looked at every city with the largest budgets for homelessness, it's the places where the highest homeless problem is.
But it's also where the biggest populations are.
Yeah. Usually led by the same people that are making the same bad decisions that created the homeless issue.
I think, I think this is, this is bigger than our, our intended town hall for the evening. Um, we've got about a couple more minutes till we hit the, the slotted time here, seven fifty-seven. Want to make sure.
You want to speak before, while we're there? Okay.
Yeah.
I, I, I like to make a comment, uh, or I should say I'd like to react to a comment that this gentleman made uh, about the uh, people that are in the community that are right now borderline uh, being homeless. Uh, people have had their PGE bills increased seventeen percent. It's going to go up again another seven percent next year. Uh, there's going to be, we know, uh, increased water sewage situation. And now, and I know I'm probably opening up a can of worms. What is the impact that this school bond is going to have on the people of this community? Are we going to see more homelessness? Because that extra tax burden that these people are going to have to pay is going to drive people out of their homes. Uh, we have people right now that, that, that just can't afford it. They're trying to figure out how are, I'm going to be able to, how are we going to make the ends meet? Uh, so is the city expecting that the school bond is going to pass? And if so, what's the impact to our community? Whereas if, what's the impact going to be if the school bond gets rejected?
That's a fine line. I, I can't really answer that truthfully. I think the bond will pass. And I'll tell you why I think the bond will pass. The children in Estacada, it's been a long time since the last bond was passed. Our school is outdated. There's no doubt. That school is in serious troubles. I've been in so many rooms in there. I can't tell you. And I've seen the ceiling falling in. I've seen the heating system shot. I've seen the air conditioning doesn't exist. It's a fan. Uh, they don't have any infrastructure for computers, uh, any, I mean, it's, it's really bad. So yes, I think the school bond will pass. Do I think it'll put a bar, burden on the taxpayers? Yes, it will. It sure will. It will at any time it ever comes in. You know, now is it the best time? I can't say that it is. It's scary out there, but at the same time, would it be any better later? I don't know. So it's like, that's something for you as a taxpayer to weigh out. Um, where you're going to be with it. Will it affect people financially? I think it will. You know, you got to look at all the set income we have here. Our elderly population, you know, their set income. They know exactly what they can spend. They know exactly what they can spend per month. This is going to hurt them. It's going to be big. The PG, same thing. But is that any different than it's ever been in our nation? Have we ever really? I can't say that we have. So it's a tough one. It's a tough one. Well, I can't, I don't have the answer to it really.
This might be a way of slowing down growth.
There you go. Annalee?
Just to, just to respond to your comment specifically, there's a, a tax bond calculator that's on the Facebook page for, yes, for the school bond or whatever. And it's $3.14 per thousand, thousand of your assessed tax value. So we live in the same neighborhood, you know, the, my tax statement's like six, but the assessed value's like 195. So the burden for my family's like $30 a month or something like that. So, you know, and it's homeowners that are going to pay it. And I just feel like I got two kids in the school. We just went to the high school orientation and Sean's right. Like for people that have this much pride in our community, like we need to put up or shut up. Because it's shameful in a way, you know what I mean? Like I drive past Sandy, I work over there all the time, and I drive past that school and I'm like, God dang, this is, it looks like a college, you know what I mean? So I think that when you have something like that's the, that's an anchor in the community, that's where the kids go. That's just, it's a source of pride. It's an investment. Nobody wants to pay another 40 or 50 bucks a month, but well, the, also the burden, the tax burden decreases annually proportionately. And the more people that come to the community, they also help alleviate that tax burden. So the more people that come to the community, the less we all have to pay as time progresses. So there is this whole way of summarizing or, or sort of quantifying the equation. And it's, it's complicated, but it'll start at about probably 30 or 40 bucks a month for the average household and sort of work its way down from there. Well, it sounds like you don't have kids in school and that probably shapes your perspective, whereas I do. And that also shapes my perspective. So I would say the, the short answer is probably yes.
I think this, we could.
These guys want to go home.
But this is not really what this is about. We're coming to the end of our, our town hall. So if there's like one last question we can answer, there you go. Hartwig, you got it.
I'm Richard Hartwig. I have been a long time. I was in your shoes 29 years ago. And the issues are the same now as they were then. What do we want Estacada to look like? How are we going to pay for it? And I never heard one thing said about a new fire department across the street. And that's been ongoing for now almost 25 years. And so, you know, we took a vote and I think they lost by less than 40 votes to build a new, a fire department. And I haven't heard them come back and ask, you know, because everybody's asking for all these million dollars, multi-million dollars. And I don't know, think that any one of us in this building is a millionaire. I'll never be, but I like what this gentleman said right here about he has kids in there and I have property, but I don't have kids. Dang it. And so, but I am going to support our community in every way I can. And with mostly, I, I can't even afford to sell property with capital gains unless I live there. And so I am stuck between two rocks and a big old hard place. But anyway, for the job you do, I want to thank you all because you're hitting it on the head and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
You got one more day for, for however you feel about the school bond. I personally am supporting it. It's going to cost me about $40 a month. But you have one more day to vote on that. So that's something that we're not going to be deciding for the community and the, and the households within the school district. The community's going to decide that. And whatever the majority of the community that votes on that, I would just encourage you, if you feel strongly about it and you haven't put, put your vote in yet, make sure to get it done before tomorrow.
Anybody else have a comment in closing?
Same, same thing along the line of what Mike was saying, you know, all the, all the, everything that's going on in the state of Oregon, nothing's going to get, nothing's going to change unless you vote. You, you know, every, I just wish everybody would get out there, get, get their ballots turned in. You have till tomorrow to get them turned in. Just vote, please.
Very good.
And, and I want to echo what Walleye was saying earlier about talking to Salem, the people in Salem. What we're facing in Estacada is not unique to Estacada. Other small towns around the whole state are feeling the impact of the housing crisis declaration. So it's, it's impacting infrastructures across the state and, and something needs to be done to help the, the small towns and the schools as well, too.
I just thank you everybody for coming. I do care. So I know that everybody sitting up here cares as well about what you guys have to say and how you feel. Some of us are better at stating things than others or this, but I can tell you the general consensus up here is that every single, every single one of us hears what you say. We do listen. But the beautiful thing is that we get to agree and disagree. That's just what we get to do as human beings, right? We're not acting in the interest of one person, but in 5,500 people or wherever we're at now and trying to make the best. So anyway, I just appreciate your time more than anything. So thank you for coming and thank you for speaking and thanks for the opportunity to serve you.
Well, you heard it, guys. You, I want to thank you for bringing all your questions here instead of hearing them on Facebook or everywhere else. The fact that you showed up tonight and gave us your concerns or your statements or whatever it may be, proves something. It proves that Estacada is growing. It's growing in the right way. You talk to us, we talk to you, everybody's getting along. This is something that needed to happen. So I hope we continue this program that we're doing here. I want to thank staff for being here for backup questions. They did a great job. And I want to thank you again. Just keep coming back, keep asking us the hard questions. And we hope we can answer them. So thank you and have a nice evening.